Welcome, everyone. We are here on October 15th, 2024, committee of the whole meeting. First agenda item is the approval of minutes of the committee of the whole September 17th, 2024. Adam, you had a correction.
I do.
On the Salt Lake County Public Bond presentation.
Other than Bix, yeah, just the council.
Okay, OXO, yep.
We're regarding them.
Yep.
Billy and OXO.
All right, was there any other corrections that anybody have seen or anything like that on the committee of the whole minutes? None? Okay, then I will take a voice vote. Everyone say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Oh, I need a motion. Someone give me a motion.
I'll motion to approve the meetings for the committee of the whole. That's it. November 17th, 2024.
Can we have a second? And everyone say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, well, there you go.
All in favor, say aye.
Well, in favor, say aye. Okay, we have our first discussion item. It is a presentation on the Main Street USA program with Jen Kiekel-Lynn presenting in 20 minutes. Oh, yes!
Can I plug this in?
Yeah, sure. Come, come, come.
Dining table, eating dinner.
Well, it's more than just.
My size of dinner.
Is this a worker? Who is it?
So this is my awesome husband.
Worker.
And a lot of people know that he's from Alaska. And then you guys have the Alaska connection.
Parents in Alaska.
Oh, wow.
Lazy, small world.
Kind of fun.
Look at us, we're all good. Oh.
That means if I knew his parents, I'm old.
At what part of Alaska?
I was born in Nome and I grew up in Kenai.
Oh.
So Kenai's Alaska.
Mm-hmm. Very pretty state.
Beautiful.
Yep.
What's your largest fish that you've ever caught?
The largest? Well, not on a line, but in a net, we caught a 98-pound king.
They were caught. 98-pound king.
Yeah, the record is 97.
She's eating healthy.
Caught on a line. Caught on a line of sports fishing. So that should be.
And how would you eat that?
One bite at a time. One bite at a time. Yeah.
Many steaks.
Do you know?
You did it.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
We love Jen.
I know, everybody does.
Yep.
She's a good one.
Oh, I think you have it on the wrong one.
I am good.
This one has it.
Oh, that was this? I just got this.
Oh, it's a.
That was the power.
Did you? Trained display video.
This is just my presentation.
Okay.
I have the connection.
Yeah.
This species should work, not all the adaptors.
She has an adapter.
Okay. If you do. Don't do two.
I'm just getting it, Jen.
You know, it's like a little bit long.
Still.
No. It's like the screen, just the black. It's like, oh, that's a free book.
He's a mess.
You get a motion, Main Street America? I think I'm visiting him.
There we go. I'll send it up here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Pretty well done. All right, sorry for that. So all of you, I think, probably know me by now. I show up here all the time. But for those of you that don't, my name is Jen Kiekel-Lynn, and you just saw my husband, Jason Lynn. Together, we have six kids. We live in Murray. I am a fourth-generation resident. We actually purchased my 100-year-old family property a couple of years ago. So we're here forever. I also, 10 years ago, started a real estate company here in Murray, and then also two nonprofits here in Murray. And throughout the last 10 years of starting all these things and being really passionate about nonprofit and real estate and really searching for a lot of resources to be able to do all those things, I found that we needed a lot more resources in Murray for those of us that are starting businesses. And just over the years, I wanted to put together something that I could be a resource for those doing the same thing as me. And so I, about a year ago, started putting together a program, and I thought, this is a lot of work. It's like recreating, starting a new business. So while searching for different things to do, I came across this program called the Main Street America Coordinating Program. So I'm curious if you guys are familiar with this program.
I am.
Okay, so a couple of you are, so a good mix. This program, so it's, there's three parts to it. So the Main Street America program has been around for 40 years. They have a network of more than 1,600 neighborhoods nationwide. A lot of resources, all the resources are available to states that maybe even don't have the program. So those resources are grant opportunities, helping businesses that are just starting up, those that maybe want to apply for an SBA loan, maybe they need help with assistance, with financial assistance, with renting a commercial space, all these things. So it's 40 years of history, proven, you know, experience there. So then, under Main Street America, we have what's called Utah Main Street. That's under the umbrella of the Main Street America program. It started five years ago in Brigham City in Price. And then currently, well, it's under the direction of the Department of Cultural and Community Engagement. Currently, they have 11 communities that are Tier One affiliates, and then seven that are Tier Two. What that means is Tier One affiliates, in order to be a Tier One community, you can apply once a year. And what that means is they are going to teach you about the program. They'll help you create the connection with the community and the businesses and all the resources. You'll be able to have access to all the national resources if you're a Tier One community. Now, a Tier Two affiliate, they take those on a rolling basis throughout the year. When you're a Tier Two affiliate community, you really dive in and have more access to the grants. You're able to then hire an executive director. You, at that point, have created a nonprofit. You have committees, you have a board, all of those things. And you're really bringing in the community and the businesses at a different level. There's also a Tier Three. Communities can stay in Tier One as long as they want. Most stay for about two to three years. And then Tier Two, you can stay in that tier for as many years as you want. So the next part of this is because of I, because I was looking for all these resources, a couple of months ago, I met with the mayor and planning and zoning and everybody, as many people as I could connect with in the community. And under their support, and I had several recommendation letters, I did apply to be Tier One for Murray. So that's the third part. So now we are now a Tier One Main Street community, which is exciting.
Can we ask questions along the way?
Please do.
Okay, so what does this give Murray City now that we're a Tier One?
Excellent question. So in the folder, I have given information on their Tier One versus Tier Two.
Tier One.
And the reason for that is there was way too much information to put in the presentation. And I want you guys to be able to read this on your own and understand what this does for the city.
Okay.
I, quite a few of us put a lot of time into thinking of the name. That's why it's Murray City Downtown District, because under the direction of Main Street America, it does need to target the downtown of a community. And we're really lucky in Murray that we have Block One, where we're in this perfect time of redeveloping not only the downtown, but, you know, bringing local businesses and whoever we can into, you know, the downtown. So what this does in Tier One, it gives us the resources to be able to reach out to businesses that want to be in Murray. We can offer them grants. We can help them, you know, with their startup costs, all the things like that. I have all the resources to do that. So for example, Annie with Tea Roads. Now that she's going to work on the chapel, I'm sure that she will probably want to look into some grants, being minority-owned.
Yeah.
Woman-owned, historic building, all the things. She may or may not know where to get those connections. All of those connections are through Main Street America.
Okay.
Things like that.
Well, Elvonne from the community economic development, will he be involved in this?
Yes, so he will be on my board that I'm creating.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then do we have to reapply every year to be Tier One, Tier One, Tier One, Tier One, and then eventually Tier Two? Do we have to keep reapplying for that?
Yeah, good question. Not necessarily reapplying, just stay up on their, you know, their specific benchmarks and things that they require. It's not necessarily reapplying per se.
Just making, making sure that whoever's on your department, whatever, that we're, the city's needing all their requirements to stay on those tiers.
Right.
Okay.
And the requirements are mainly on me or whoever's in this role. This is something that a business owner or a community member, they typically start it, not the city. And the reason for that is the city is, you know, we want to take this off your plate as a business owner. You know, being a business owner in Murray, I understand, you know, maybe the resources that I need, the way that I want to reach out to the community. I want to include the community and the growth of downtown. I don't want this to all fall on the city's shoulders. Really, it's the support of the city to be able to, in each of your districts, the businesses that you know that maybe are struggling, that need access to these resources, maybe some businesses that want to come into Murray, they don't know how to do that. They don't know where to find space to rent, space to buy, you know, all the different resources like that. I want them to be able to have one stop. They can call me, and then I can say, here's your contact at the city. Here's your contact at the Chamber. Here's your contact at Coalition, you know, all the different things. So one stop.
Yeah.
Forgive my ignorance, but I love, first of all, I love what you're doing, but I'm seeing a lot of overlap with other, like the Chamber, for example.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you seeing the same thing?
Yeah, really good question. So I have, my business is a member of the Chamber. They're great, and this actually would include the Chamber. So the Chamber does a lot of networking, a lot of events, a lot of things like that. They also have an outreach that's outside of Murray. So one thing about this is this has to be just Murray.
Jam jam Murray.
Only downtown Murray. Yes, so this would highlight only businesses in Murray. So as I create the nonprofit for this, the board members, the committee members, everybody involved, you have to be a business in Murray. You have to be a nonprofit in Murray. You have to be a resident in Murray to actually be a part of those committees and the board. And so I think what's great about it is it really does bring all these organizations that are so amazing in their own right, under one umbrella, because we all do something completely different. The Chamber, you know, they do a lot of great events and things. But again, it's not just based on Murray. And I think it's really important to have something that is just about Murray. I think, you know, again, I'm a Murray business, and I love knowing that I started my business in Murray. I'm not a franchise, and I'm a local business. And I rely on residents and people in my community to support what I'm doing, and I want to do the same for, you know, the local businesses in the city, too.
And the Chamber doesn't have necessarily access or information about grants? I know that's something that they talked about when I was on the board.
Right.
Yes. So this would be a little bit more like.
Right.
And they don't have, they had a grant writer, we won't get into it.
But not for businesses.
They, they do for themselves, but not for businesses.
But not for businesses. And that'll be a part of this, too, is I would love to get to the point where I can offer that service to businesses. Because, you know, when you start a business, you take something that you absolutely love and you start a business. But that doesn't mean that you're great at every part of the business, right? I don't want to do my taxes. I'm not great at taxes, but I'm very good at starting a business and doing real estate and all the parts of it. But when a business comes to me and they say, you know, like Annie, for example, Jen, I need a grant for a woman-owned, minority-owned, you know, to do this building. I can research that for her and potentially write the grant for her.
And you're a grant writer, correct?
I am a grant writer.
Because you just got licensed, or have you always been a grant writer? I'm trying to remember the information that I was given on about.
I've written several grants over the years for nonprofits, and I am in a program to write grants. That's part of this Main Street program as well. I am in several, they call it the Main Street Institute. It's actually a school within this Main Street America program. I've been doing that for several months before I got Murray City accepted. So I've already gone through the small business portion of that education. There's also a grant writing section of that. So I'm just, you know, sharpening up those skills so that I can help someone like Annie or someone else that calls me and says, you know, I have this, this building that I would love to buy or rent, you know, what grants can you research, you know, for me? Again, a business owner isn't going to know where to get those. They're not going to even know where to start, nor do they have time to do that. They need to run their business. So real quick, we talked about the downtown area, downtown district. So the name of our Main Street program is Murray City Downtown District, Block One, so we won't get too much into that. And real quick, this is an immediate timeline that I've put on myself. This is not what they gave me. I want to push this through the Tier Two very quickly. So program acceptance was last month. November, I will have the board and committees put together. I've already created a Facebook page. I have a website started, posting on Murray citizens to find out who wants to be a part of this. I've already had a lot of citizens reach out, a lot of business owners reach out. I'm already submitted, I'm going to submit my nonprofit application next month, and I want to, I plan to have that back by January. The turnaround on those has been about three months. And then submit for the Tier Two approval. The importance for that, and you'll kind of read in the packet, is we need to be in Tier Two that I can, so I can help these businesses have the resources for grants. That's the big one. So I can go to these businesses and get resource to them.
No, the state offers certain helps in certain things, like economic analysis, right? Do you have to be Tier Two to get that? Or how do we start getting those things?
Yeah, Tier Two definitely opens up a lot more potential for state resources, absolutely. Tier, think of it like this, Tier One is like, you know, being in kindergarten, you have great things you're learning about, but you're not really, you're just kind of learning a little bit. And then you get in first grade, and you really get to learn how to read and all those things. It's like that. So that's why I really want to push this to be in Tier Two very quickly, so that I can have the resources and then come back to all of you. And you may have businesses that need, that have immediate need for things, and I can't really do that if I'm in Tier One. It's just all in, you know, learning just a little bit in Tier One, and I don't want to stay there for a long time. I'm putting the, I'm putting a quick timeline on myself, more than anyone else's. So I want to push this through, because I feel like Murray businesses need this right now.
So I'm going to ask it to a point. What will the state give us? Because I know I've sat, I've sat through a presentation about this, and they said there are certain things the state will give us beyond just grants. What are some of the things that the state will give us as part of this program?
Really good question. I'm still learning about all the benefits, to be honest. The big thing that they've pushed for me are the grants. That's the big need, that they have people reaching out for right now. But yeah, good question.
Because they said, so ULCT, we'll talk about it later. I sat through a presentation on this, and one of the things they said is they'll come in, do an economic analysis of what kind of businesses have worked in the past here, and what can work in the future in our downtown area, so.
And they, they're coming to do a Utah Main Street. They are going to do a tour of Block One next week, if any of you want to be a part of that.
Oh, could you give us the date, the time and all that, and then?
Absolutely.
I can put it on our calendar.
I'll send you the information.
Yeah.
Absolutely. They, I do know they'll come in and do.
Just don't do it during the haunted woods.
It's not during the haunted woods. I think it's next Thursday.
Okay.
I know better not to do it those three days. Sherry Van Biver would not be happy. I do know that they, the state level, will come and do classes with local businesses. I do know that they will do that.
Oh, wow.
There's a lot of great resources in this.
It's amazing. I was shocked when I came across it.
Yeah, they presented.
You beat me to the punch. When I walked down this presentation and was like, went to Chelsea and was like, okay, how do we get this? And she's like, oh, Jen's already got it.
Yeah, I was with you.
Yeah, Brett was with me. Like, really, I was like, ready to get as part of this. And so you just beat me to the punch. I think this is really great.
That did something in Spokane or Seattle.
Seattle area.
Seattle, back in the, when he worked out there.
Wow.
I love it. And like I said, there was so much to put in this presentation. That's why I gave you these handouts. Once you read what this is about, I mean, it is such an amazing program. It's a goldmine of resources, to be honest, for the city. So Murray and Logan are the newest communities. The newest, oh, yeah, that picture was taken by my husband. And, yeah.
You just happen to be colorblind, but it, you know.
Exactly.
They work out.
I know, how much more time?
You've got four.
Four minutes, okay. So we already talked about this. Why would Jen pursue this? We already talked about that.
Yeah.
I just am really passionate about our community. That's why I'm here at all the meetings. That's why I'm doing this. I am actively running my real estate company and my nonprofits, but I really firmly believe in this. We need this program. So I love that you, a lot of you have said we need it the same. Yeah, so just thank you for all those that helped me bring this to the city. It obviously wasn't just me. It was a lot of meetings with a lot of people. And real quick, since we are talking about Murray businesses specifically, a big part of this is really sharing with the community to shop local. I mean, we talk about this, but I think that's very important and really promoting our local businesses. And so part of that, and I'll leave this box with you guys, I partner with 120 nonprofits, and several of them are in Murray. And my very favorite one is the Other Side Academy. So they have one location right up here on 4800 South. They also have the thrift store. They have the storage, they have all the things. But every time I reach out to them, they are so willing to give back, and I love giving back to them, too. So they have put together gifts for you guys. And they are beanies, but then there's a candy that they make at their academy that anybody can purchase. So it's just kind of an example of why you want to shop local, support local.
Can you just take two minutes? I'm going to give you two more minutes. Will you just explain to the council, the Other Side Academy, and how, where these guys and gals are coming from? I was at their ribbon-cutting ceremony when I was first sworn in.
Okay.
At their storage unit.
Storage unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went to that one, too.
Just west of Murray High. Just tell the council exactly where these guys have come from.
Definitely, if you aren't familiar with the Other Side, look them up. They help incarcerated individuals have a new start. So they have their main academy that's downtown. They have expanded just into a commercial space right up here, right by the old 49th Street Galleria, their thrift store, all the things like that. So what they do is they, actually, when you are incarcerated, you have to write a letter to the Other Side. So that's where it starts. And they only take a certain number of people into their academy. They're very, it's a very select few. And once you are enrolled, you have to be there, I think it's for two years, but you're learning life skills. They do just a lot of amazing things. But the one thing that I love there is they want the individuals that are there to learn how to create businesses. So they have a lot of different enterprises. So they have a donut shop that's out west, they have the thrift store, they have the moving company, they have a handyman company, they have all these different things. And so anybody can support what they do. Because, you know, not only do they give back to us, but we need to support them. I mean, I, it's got to the point now where we'll go to the thrift store, and I know a lot of these people, I'm sure my husband would say the same. I've been to a lot of the ribbon cuttings as well.
Yeah.
I've actually been to one downtown, walking downtown by myself and from the parking lot across the street, and they actually have escorted me down this street. I mean, they're just, they are just the sweetest people ever. And so I love supporting them whenever I can. And so that was kind of the natural one to call, to say, you know, can you help me out with, with this? And they just, they give. So just another example.
Their cookies are great.
Their cookies are amazing, you know, they have succulents, all these things. So just another example of why supporting local is so important. You know, we talk about Tea Roads and Italian Village and all these great restaurants, you know, supporting the other businesses, too, and the nonprofits, I think, is really important. And that's what Main Street America does, is it brings the community, nonprofit, and the businesses together.
How did you find out about this?
Oh, a lot of research. My husband knows I don't sleep.
We should meet at 3:00 in the morning.
I know. I, I, my parents are both entrepreneurs, and I don't know any different. I just, I love creating things that make a difference and really bring me a lot of joy. And so I was trying to find something that was already out there, out there, bringing all these things together, and I found it. And if I hadn't found it, then I would have just created it. So, but with 40 years, you know, backing it, that's, you know, a lot of great resources and history proven.
Will you get paid doing this, or is this all voluntary?
It's just, I'm just doing it because I want to. During Tier Two, you can create a paid executive, executive director position. That is part of it. They, they do give you the tools to do that. So in the spring, you know, hitting these benchmarks and all these things, you know, that would definitely be something, a potential that I may come to you and say, you know, now we're in Tier Two, is this something we'd be open to? You know, I'm doing this because I just know we need it.
Yeah.
And I love it. So, but they do have an opportunity for that, if all of that's been created, if we wanted to get to that point.
Okay. They moved your stuff, they moved our, my, our daughter. And I'm telling you, these men are amazing, how they just, okay, we're ready. And I'm going, I'm still on box one. They're really, they're, the Other Side Academy, I can't talk enough about them.
But that's just a good example. We have all these incredible nonprofits and businesses in Murray. And I think, yeah, just, you know, to wrap up, this is just another great resource. Just think of it as kind of an umbrella and extension of the city. So when somebody does start a new business, they get their business license, you know, they, you know, go through the city, then they can contact me, and I can get them all the resources from one place, rather than, you know, where do I go next? So.
That's wonderful. Any other questions? Do you, council have any?
No. Very quickly. I can add to it, or you want me to wait until the ULCT report?
ULCT report.
Okay, because I, I'll add some things that they talked about in my presentation.
Great, great.
I feel like they present it every year. It's always one of those ones that is always there. And when I did apply, just so you guys know, there are a lot of you that, they knew Murray wanted it. So they, they have been very eager for me to push this through the Tier Two very quickly, the same as Logan. So we're both kind of on the same schedule to, to push it very quick.
Well, ninety percent of the time, I knew all of this, we're the ones that have to start something and beg someone to help us do that. And Jen came to us and we're going, where are you on this?
He didn't say no.
No, we didn't. No, once you showed us, we're going, okay. So Elvonne will be a part of this.
Yeah, Elvonne is great. Yeah, Elvonne will, will definitely be on the board. And, you know, the board, like I said, will, you know, be full of business owners, you know, those family-run, deep-rooted, multi-generational.
And this information will be up in the CED department, right? So they know when a business comes in, somebody will say, hey, listen, this, we have this.
All of that will be there. Yep. And the things that I'm working on right away is there's a business resource guide. There's a box that will actually go out to all new businesses that will have resources like the Chamber, the City, like all the things like that. Again, I just got the approval a couple of weeks ago, so I'm, I'm still getting it all worked out. So.
Amazing, amazing. This is great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, now we're on to discussion number two. Discussing ordinance amending section seventeen point seventy eight point zero four zero and seventeen point seventy eight point zero five zero. And seventeen point seventy eight point zero nine zero of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to standards for detached accessory dwelling units. Zachary Smolins. Good evening, Zachary.
Hello. How are you guys?
Doing good.
Good. So, um, yeah, this is just a staff-led text amendment, uh, for detached ADUs. Every year, we kind of look at this as part of the moderate income housing plans, um, and see if there's things that we can work on to, uh, make ADUs a little bit easier to build in the community. So this year, that's what, we're, we're looking at a few, uh, big things. Um, so, um, entrances. So currently, the way it's written is, um, it can't, like, on a corner side yard area, they couldn't have an entrance before. I guess I can show slides. This will be just easier to, to explain if I just show the slides. So. Let's see if it does that. Okay. So you can see here, uh, these are the same slides I showed the planning commission. Uh, these are a number of, of homes that have, that are on corners that you wouldn't necessarily know, you know, whether it's an ADU or if it's just the home. Um, and you can see, like, let me get the laser pointer here. This actually looks like the front of the home, but it is actually the corner side yard. The front yard is on this other side over here. So you can kind of see. So one, that's one of the things that I'd like to, uh, that staff is supporting, removing. We, we don't see a big impact. Um, it, it was originally in, uh, placed in there so that it didn't give the appearance of a duplex or something along those lines. Uh, we don't typically see that in any of the ADUs. We see that do have them in the side yard, but not the corner side yard. Some of the other proposed changes for the detached specifically, um, an increase of the allowable area. So it still has a maximum of a thousand square feet, but increasing that to fifty percent of the dwelling as opposed to forty percent. Uh, we have a lot of small houses in Murray, um, that, in, in older Murray anyway, uh, that are only, you know, nine hundred to eleven hundred square feet. And you get to forty percent of that, you only have, you know, a four hundred square foot ADU. So allowing them to get that extra square footage with still the max being a thousand square feet. So between forty and fifty percent there. Uh, reducing the parking requirement to match the attached ADU standards. We still, to this day, since we've been, um, had that in the internal ADU standard, we still have never received a complaint on a permitted ADU. Um, they still are very successful, very, um, great. Uh, we, we have never received a complaint on one. Um, this one is the big one. So we reduced the setbacks from fifteen slash twenty-five feet to ten feet in the rear yard area. Um, and increased the setback from eight to ten feet on the side. Allowing that so that, uh, just ease of people. So it's just ten feet all around.
So what was the reasoning for this, changing this from ten to fifteen?
So currently, currently, the setbacks, if your home was built prior to nineteen eighty-seven, you have a fifteen-foot rear yard setback. If it's after nineteen eighty-seven, it is twenty-five feet. So that's why I say fifteen to twenty-five feet and reducing it to ten feet. Because, so that's the, the way our code reads right now is that it requires the detached accessory dwelling unit to meet the same setbacks as a dwelling. So it would be twenty-five or fifteen, depending on when the house was built. Um, so through research that we've done throughout the state, um, thi- this has been one of the most strict, um, setback requirements almost statewide. Um, most are somewhere between four feet and ten feet. And so I, we're recommending, yeah, some are as slow as two feet, um, away from the property line. Yep. Yep. And, um, yeah, so we are recommending that ten feet, um, along the rear property line. And then, let's see, and then remove the requirement for the ADU to match, um, the existing dwelling in architectural style. A lot of times in older homes, it's kind of hard to match that aesthetic. Um, so we are recommending removing that as well.
So then you could have houses that are just, um, square or, I mean, it would, it does, is, does the aesthetic matter?
Um, over, mostly no, because the city can't dictate architectural style anyway for single-family homes. We're not allowed to do that. Um, so really.
So then why bother with this?
What do you mean?
Why bother with, um, saying that it does not have to match it if it, if it doesn't matter?
Well, it doesn't matter for the single-family dwelling. It could matter for the ADU. We could require it and it has been to, to this date up until now. So removing that just allows some more flexibility for people to actually do these detached ADUs that have been wildly popular.
So, right. So currently, the aesthetic does matter and with this, it doesn't.
Correct.
Zach, going back to the setback, you give us an example of six cities, four of whom have less than ten feet, but two of them have the same as the main dwelling.
So that's six out of the, what, there's seventeen minutes of Valletta Valley or something like that. Do we know where the other eleven?
I have, I have a big spreadsheet of a, a lot, of probably everything, at least in the county.
It'd be interesting to see the, the whole picture, not just a snapshot, cause.
Okay. Most of what you see in front of you is the cities around us, which will be the most impactful.
So, so four have less, two would have more. Okay.
They're about the same.
I'm wondering why we're, if this is so successful, why are we changing it at all?
To make it more successful.
So, cause I've looked at the stats of other cities.
Yeah.
Midville has forty-one and eighteen, or sorry, Mill Creek. Midville has one and added six. Sandy has ninety-nine and added two. South Salt Lake has four and added three last year. Tersil has a hundred and twenty-six and added thirteen. We're at a hundred and seven. So out of those six cities, we're top two and added five. If we already have something that's working, why change it? And especially if we're worried about the moderate income housing, why don't we wait till we have issues with moderate income housing and hold this in our back pocket till then?
So that goes, that's a great question. And it comes up with your, with the general plan that the city council adopted and is required by state law. So every year, we have to look at each one of these strategies and we have to make progress on each strategy. And if we don't, that can cost the city up to a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per day. And that's calendar day. So that results in about ninety thousand dollars to the city.
But if we come back with a fail on moderate income housing, we have two weeks to adopt before fines kick in. So if we fail, we just adopt it within the two weeks, we're fine.
I, I think that's a poor way to legislate, to be honest, um, is to wait until we're failing, um, instead of proactively doing the right thing.
I think it's a poor way to legislate, given me a document that I haven't seen before committed whole, when we're changing legislative action.
I, again, these are things that were, I mean, it says exactly right up there in your, in, in the general plan that, you know, second ADUs on properties, setback requirements for detached ADUs. So that's in your general plan. And I know that you are.
It's in moderate income housing, but.
And that's in the general plan.
When does the general plan get recreated? When do we do a new general plan?
Um, it depends. It can be anywhere from, uh, five to fifteen years.
And when's the last one?
Twenty seventeen.
It's due.
Due.
It's due. The world has changed since twenty seventeen.
Definitely do. Um, how many of these things do we have to adopt in order to show progress for the state requirement?
Uh, you have to follow everything that's in, in your moderate income housing. So if you look at the moderate income housing section, you have a list of everything that's in there and that's what I report back to the state. So, um, a lot of it I'm able to reply on. Um, and that's why, again, this would have been a, probably one text amendment, a lot bigger. But they require, um, annual updates on everything. So I'm doing incremental updates every year as opposed to doing one large zone amendment.
And I hope we don't take our pushback, you know, in the wrong way. We, we love, we love probing to get answers. Cause you get answers, Zach, we're gonna get those answers from you.
Yeah, no, for sure. That's, no, that's why I'm here.
No, you're doing great.
I have some questions on the ordinance. This is, um, receive rent from the, for the owner occupied. How is that going to be monitored? How, how are you going to know if I have an ADU in my backyard that I'm not collecting rent from?
So it's in the rules. So being that it's in the zoning, um, regulations, they do sign an affidavit and it's recorded at the county that they're not going to do things like that and that they're going to comply with the sections if it's found. Obviously, you know, um, with most things that come regarding, um, enforcement, it's on a complaint basis. So if somebody complains that this is being, if that's being violated, that's something that we would investigate and then look into that.
And then it says, an additional occupant, uh, vehicle shall be parked on site. On street, parking shall be reserved for visitors only. How do we know it's a visitor and not somebody in the ADU in the back?
Same thing.
Okay. And then, um, in your red, it had like four and then the three underlined. Is it forty-three or is it three? A total of four or three or forty-three off-street parking space stalls be provided? Because the four wasn't striked out. It was, the three was underlined. It was on.
So it would be, it would be three.
It would be three?
Three.
Okay. So because you have four and three, but the four wasn't striked out. So I was just curious about that. And then it says, short-term rental is defined here as renting all or a portion of a property for less than thirty days. So how will this be monitored if it ends up being a short-term rental?
So it, that's in that affidavit that's recorded.
Okay, so they sign that?
They sign it. It's notarized. It's recorded at the county. So everything, um, that's shown in there is, then we can enforce it that way. And the state actually did give us leeway on that. So even if there's a listing, so I don't know how familiar you are, but the, but the state has a thing in there. So we can't go after people if they're just listing on a website. However, they did say that if it's an internal ADU or an ADU at all, if they are listing, we can go after them for that, um, because they did sign that affidavit.
And then in your, uh, public hearing with the planning commissioners.
Yeah.
Commissioner Milkovich.
Uh huh.
Okay, she asked if a roll-up door would be allowed. And you said, what, you weren't, wasn't sure, but believing that building code would not permit it.
Yeah.
How would that be handled? I mean, would your, would you go out and check to make sure there's not a rolled-up door?
Yes. Yeah, it would be done at, at a building inspection level or before that, when they come in for a building permit, we would review it at that point.
Okay. I really think aesthetic matters. So, um, I think that's important.
Okay.
I have a question. Did we fail last year for our moderate, moderate income housing?
No.
No, okay.
No. I'm, well, oh, sorry. That's, I haven't received anything from this year's report. So this year would cover from August to August. So August of twenty-three to August of twenty-four. From August of twenty-two to August of twenty-three, we did pass.
Okay. I'm just wondering. And how many other steps are we required and in what time?
So every year, we have to do something in each of the five. We, we adopted five, the city council adopted five strategies to look into. I just got out of a, a league, um, Commission on Housing Affordability, uh, Task Force. Um, and they did say that there's probably going to be large revisions to the moderate income housing, uh, plan.
For the next session.
For, in the next session, um, that will probably require that to be amended, um, sometime next year.
Can we revisit the wording? I think there's a little bit of problem with the wording in, uh, in, uh, in the one that starts in this page and ends at this, in the other page, uh, A, point A. I think one of the words there is wrong. And I'm not an attorney, so I'll, you know. Or it says, the sentence says, "The property owner, which shall include title holders in contract, which was occupied either the principal unit or the ADU, as a permanent resident and at no time receive rent from the unit occupied by the owner."
Correct.
Owner, owner?
Yep. Yeah. So the, the owner cannot receive, sorry, what page was that on again?
Well, there's no page number.
Oh, okay. So it's the first page of the ordinance at the very bottom.
Okay.
And it ends in the next page.
Point zero five zero.
It's, sounds like the second owner should say occupant. But anyway, I'm not an attorney. I'm just kind of dropping that in there. Maybe that should be looked at. And the other one you, we should look at the wording is on the, on the, uh, last page for the signature pages. Point A, "By applying for an ADU, the property owner shall agree that the main dwelling and the proposed ADU will not be used as a short-term rental."
I'm thinking, my evil mind says, oh, that's saying that I can't use both, but doesn't seem, say I can't use one. So maybe we have GL look at it. Should it say and/or to make sure that one can't be used? Because it's implying both can't be used.
We can, we can have, we can have GL look at it.
Yeah.
Um, I know that Mark and him did look at, look through these before we sent them out.
Yeah.
But we can, we, I can have him look at it again. Regarding the other one, I'm having a hard time finding it.
It's seventeen point seven eight point zero five zero detached accessory dwelling development standards.
Okay.
Point A.
Oh, A, okay.
Yeah, point A, on the very, very bottom.
Property owner.
Several years.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, that's right.
It's just not clear to me. Except, I'm not a sharp stick around, so I mean, please, please.
No, no, you're fine. The code is a, is a, you have to, have to learn how to read this after something here.
So I'm just trying to handle that.
So it is, so it, so I think it is written correctly. So what we're saying is that the, whatever unit the owner is occupying cannot receive rent from somebody also living in the same unit the owner is in. So say like, so for example, let's say, and I'll go back to.
Also, you like, if he lives in the house, he can't rent a bedroom.
Correct.
Right. Ah.
Yes, he can't, yeah.
Ah, okay, okay.
Yep, precisely.
See, I'm a little tense, but I get there.
Hey, see, you're getting there. That's good.
I wouldn't add the S.
That's all right. Thank you.
That's a great question. So that, I don't know why it was in code. It's always been there and I've left it there. I just clarified.
Okay, see. So you can't, so makes an ADU, they can't rent an additional bedroom in their house.
Correct. That was something that was always in there and I, again, didn't feel comfortable changing it at this point.
And it could be with parking, it would be complicated parking regulations.
Complicated parking regulations.
That would add a third element to the last.
Interesting.
Okay. Council.
Okay.
Would we like to wait for some more information before we bring this to the council meeting in November?
I, I would feel comfortable waiting a little bit. I'm still not quite.
Would you like to wait until we bring it in November? And hopefully do some of the modifications that, uh, we've talked about.
Yeah.
And the request, I don't know if it was you or Adam requesting more of a printout of other cities.
Yeah, I asked for other cities.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's just a little bit more stuff that we need, but we're in the right path. We just need a little bit more time.
Okay, so other cities.
Yeah.
Um, what were some of the other ones?
Modification on the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Keep the aesthetic. Yeah.
Can I ask why?
I think that's important. I mean, I think you can have, um, all kinds of odd things that might go in the back of, of, you know, just a, a really nice house and then you have something crazy in the back and I would be concerned about that.
So currently, just one, just one thing I just want to bring up is that, so somebody could build a shed and it doesn't have to match the aesthetic currently. So they could build whatever they want.
That it would be a shed.
Correct. That's no different. And it could be larger.
Yeah. But this requires building inspection too, correct?
It does, of course. Yeah.
My shed looks like my house.
We don't require even with like builds to match an aesthetic right now, do we?
For what?
Like in, in different zones.
No, so for single-family zones, the state has said we are not allowed to dictate materials or locations of windows or sizes outside of building code, things like that. Um, yeah.
And then make sure on that, where it says four and three, and three's underlined, the four is dashed out.
Yep.
So it's not forty-three.
Yeah.
Four, okay. Okay. All right, so we're gonna hold off, we're gonna wait for more information and then Zach will come back to the committee of the whole, present things to us. And then we'll proceed, either going to the council or we hold or whatever the council would like to do. Does, does that sound okay?
Thank you.
So you want it back in Capitol Hall on November twelfth?
Would we want to come back on November twel- November twelfth?
I don't care.
November twelfth.
Okay.
Okay. Zach, you're gonna time back, you can tell it's twenty-eight.
Yeah.
If not, we can do the.
Yeah, we can hold it as long as it would be helpful for you, Zach.
Okay. All right. And Zach, you've got the next one.
Yep.
Discussion ordinance amending, this is discussion item number three. Discuss an ordinance amended section seventeen point six four point zero two zero and seventeen point zero six four point zero nine zero of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to residential fence, fencing regulations set, and setbacks and fencing between residential and non-residential zoning districts, Zach.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is a, this kind of came from a resident, but staff pursued the text amendment. Um, there was a, uh, so this is all regarding residential fencing. So our current code, you can see, is on your left-hand side on the slide above you, um, which doesn't allow for, um, if your house is within twelve feet, uh, I'm sorry, if your property line is within twelve feet of a driveway to a house, you're not allowed to put up any fencing whatsoever if it's on a corner yard. Um, thus restricting, you know, some of the property rights of people on that house, um, for use of their own property. So, um, working with the city engineer's office, the attorney's office and us as staff, uh, we came up with, um, a new approach here, which does allow for someone to enclose that side, that corner side yard section. Um, but also giving them an adequate amount of space, um, to, um, for that side distance when they're backing out, um, kind of gives it a ten-foot triangle, um, when backing out of the house there. But does allow them to go into a more of a six-foot fence area. Um, so this is kind of an example of what, what somebody without a, a driveway next door looks like. They can fence all the way around in the corner side yard. Um, here's one with a, with a, um, driveway next door. You can see that, that they're not able to fence nearly as much, um, of, of the yard area, keeps it completely open. Um, so that's why we, we've kind of recommended this change.
Ten foot enough?
Yeah, that's why we worked with city, the engineer's office to make sure that there was a good enough triangle there.
Almost like the car, isn't it?
About, yeah, yeah.
You could almost have a full car.
Almost, yeah. And then including, and this, this actually, we, we updated this language. So over here, this says street, this one says right-of-way. So it's ten feet from the right-of-way, so it would actually be, you know, this would, in, in more instances than not, would be like the beginning of the sidewalk. So you'd have the beginning of the sidewalk ten feet in from that point. Um, yeah, so we, here's what it could potentially look like. These were things that I found in Murray. So technically, these people are breaking the rules right now. Um, but there's plenty of those happening all over the city.
There have more driveway?
All, yeah, yeah, no, it's not their driveway.
Oh.
So it's the property, the property next door, right here. Um, but you, this is kind of what it would end up looking like. I don't, I didn't measure this, but this kind of gives you the, the look and feel of it. Um, and, and again, same type of thing. Um, yeah, so those are the, those are the proposed changes. A lot of the red text is because it was very difficult, um, from a staff perspective to actually read these and explain them to people. Uh, they weren't laid out very well or, or parsed out in an easy way for somebody to understand what is allowed in the front yard, what's allowed in the side yard, what's allowed in the corner side and what's allowed in the rear. So, um, a lot of that is cleanup. So, um, how do you take any questions?
Do you have any questions?
No, this is pretty common sense.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We got two in our.
Any questions?
People are already doing it without the ordinance.
Yeah. That's why I said what I said. We have a few in our neighborhood.
Yep.
Okay, so we have no discussions for Zach on this one?
No.
Okay, perfect, all right. Now we are gonna go to our last one. It is the reports from the Utah, Utah lease of cities and towns. We're gonna start from my left and go around the table. We'll start with Diane and then Adam.
Don't start with me.
Hey, don't start with me. You can start with me.
Okay, start with Adam, go. You have all of two.
Second, two seconds?
Right there, yep.
Two seconds. So I already mentioned I went to the, uh, Main Street program. Uh, some of the things to add just to what Jen was talking about, or that they will do is they have four type of areas that they focus on, economic vitality, design, organization and promotion. And so with this Main Street America program, they'll help us with all of those areas to, yeah, promote the area, make sure designing is inviting and whatnot. So it's, it's really beneficial and she said a lot of it already. Um, also one-on-one, uh, about, um, oh, I keep forgetting the term, elective pay, uh, which is federal government, it's from the IRA where we get federal government refunds for, um, our clean energy projects. And they can be very small, like reimbursing us for, uh, electric vehicles that we have or bigger projects that we have. So I think it's something we should talk with Brenda about, looking at what projects we have and seeing what we can get some federal reimbursement for off of that. And then, um, the other one that I went, I went to development agreements with everybody else, that was really good. And there's another one that I can't remember what I went to, it's in my notes somewhere. But that was, yeah, those were the main ones that I went to that were good. Yeah, oh, development agreements will, which I think is something we also should look at in addition to our zoning, when we can enter development agreements with developers.
Okay, Jennifer, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, just real quick, I went to, the two of the ones that I went, I went to a bunch, but two that stand out. I went to one of harnessing the power of AI. It's basically about how AI can help you.
Yes.
Um, with cer- certain tasks that we do in our office, such as minutes and things like that. Um, the state's got a pilot program helping, you know, cities do certain things, um, which I wanted to look a little bit more into, but haven't yet. The other one I went to that I thought was really good was legislative procedures. And that's where we learned about the legislative process. Like we learned about what reading a bill is, what, what a committee is, what the four procedures are. It was really kind of good to get an overview of what the legislature, how it operates. So, it was a good two.
Okay.
Um, a couple workshops I liked is the Creating Conflict Competencies. Uh, they talked about that quote, Erin Mendenhall, which talks about politics, like Thanksgiving dinner. You had the crazy uncle, the outspoken, uh, you know, nephew and, and she just says, I love the quote, stay at the table. You know, stay at the table, don't get up, don't walk away, just keep the conversations open. I really like that. I worked up to, I enjoyed a housing infrastructure tool, talked about PIDs, which I learned, I'd never heard of them before, which is really, really cool thing. Uh, talked about first, um, investment zonings, uh, how to finance projects. And, uh, then I went to issues of public safety. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Going fast.
All right, well, I kind of went on my own. You guys kind of stick together. I went on my own and I, I enjoyed the keynote speaker, Jim Craig. He was amazing. He was the nineteen eighty US Olympic hockey team, uh, pathway to the podium. He was amazing speaker, I really enjoyed him. And then I took off and went into the AI one-on-one, uh, government, uh, harnessing the power of AI. And that one I got really, um, we have to be careful with AI, with the guideline, with guidelines, it's transparency when using AI, accountability, we are still responsible, uh, fairness, unbiased, privacy, security, training and legal. And once you put something into AI, it's hard to get back out and plus they don't know very much about math and AI. But anyways, housing infrastructure tools, lessons learned, that was a really good one. I went to that and the PIDs, the PIDs, we're talking about public improvement districts. Um, uh, let's see, water rights, one-on-one, um, water shortage. There was one that I just absolutely, oh, it was the very last, uh, the very, very last where we all met together and Todd, Todd Sharon, he's a city attorney, uh, for Harriman and he was amazing. He was really funny, he was really, really good. I, I enjoyed him immensely. Um, he was talking how we have to be careful when citizens come up and talk and we have to, you know, he had a couple of videos that kind of were out there. And then the very last, last gentleman, he and I did not see eye to eye, it was about parking. And so I was not on the same wavelength as he was when it came to parking. Anyways, and then we came down to voting and I was the only one there to vote, so I voted for everyone. And I voted the mayor back in as treasurer.
Yep.
And then there was a lady there, Renee Reed, she and I were dancing.
She's done a grassroots campaigns for the ULCT president.
Yeah, I was thinking you weren't gonna vote me and I was gonna, thank you.
No, I, I voted her, and then I went to one of the booths and her name is Renee Reed. She is doing something here in the city is, oh, he's not here. It's with our IT department. Anyway, she, she goes, where are you from? And we were dancing because they had some good music on. And I said, well, from Murray. And she goes, oh, we're doing some things with Murray. And so anyways, it was very pleasant. I enjoy, I always enjoy ULCT conferences and thank you citizens for paying my way. Diane.
All right. What these guys said. I hung out with them, we had, it was really good. No. It was, so it was a good conference.
It was, it was a good conference, I really liked it.
You heard that Diane likes to sing karaoke.
Yeah, really.
No, no.
I had a video on that.
We didn't talk about your karaoke, that was so good.
Okay, we are, uh, we, we're.